Okay, here my call this meeting to order, we'll stand and do the flag. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we'll go through introductions. Oh, we want to start with that? We'll start on, we'll start right here.
My name's Brenda.
Okay.
City Councilor.
My name's Paul Keever, I'm the mayor.
Katie Norton, City Councilor.
Marta Barajas, the City Finance Director.
David Norton, I'm a BCA board member.
Kelsey Salada, Boardman Chamber.
Paul Eagle, City Councilor.
Marie King, BCDA board member.
Tori Briggs, BCDA.
Peter O'Keefe, BCDA.
Karen Perry, City Manager.
Jen Rollins, City Recorder.
Rick Stuckel, Police Chief.
And we have some guests online, looks like we have Leslie and Junior. And who was the other ones? They, they did, we'll call her Galaxy, call them Galaxy. Alright, so let's take care of introductions. I guess I'll turn the time over to Tori, Tori and Lisa in the BCDA.
Yeah, so Jacob, you want to bring up the presentation, please? You can go over and hit the BCDA mission. So we'll start off there, and this is our mission, and from there, I'll just let Lisa take over the conversation on the purpose behind BCDA and kind of what we're here for today.
Okay, um, so BCDA is a community development association. We are a 501(c)(3), this organization was formed in 1999. There's been some form of a development corporation in Boardman for many years before that, but BCDA is actually formed in 99, 501(c)(3). The mission of the BCDA is to beautify and increase the livability of the Boardman community, focusing on housing, commercial and retail development, and workforce training. The association collaborates with other organizations, municipalities, business leaders and residents to support progressive development in the community. Are there any questions about that?
So, yeah, so go ahead.
So we're here and we want this to be a very interactive conversation, so if you have a question in the middle, just go ahead and stop us and, and ask us and we can talk about it and, and we'll go through this agenda that we have presented and have open discussion as well, so we want it to be completely open.
Yep, you can hit that next area, go then. We go to lecture.
Say anything.
Next area, yep. So these are some past projects, and these are the, how much we've invested over the years. Some of those are from the beginning, and some are yearly contributions, and some are each project, and you can identify last year's projects and then this year's projects. So you can see that we really spread it out. Um, when I say school capital projects, that consists of big projects within the school districts, when they submit an application to us and we preview it and feel that falls within our buckets, and we have five categories. Right? We have recreation, beautification, education, and business development and community development. So those were just some past programs. Um, as you see the youth sports, that is just what basketball so far, because we just started that. That's new this year to us, and that will continue to be a budget item. Moving in, we got a donation from the church, and they're covering the cost this year, and then moving forward, we'll probably create a budget line to promote youth sports in our area of recreation where um, it would be free play, um, play to play, so. And we've, um, addition to our numbers, the basketball program has 150 kids from this year. That is a huge number for our community, so it shows that free is big on recreation sports, where people don't have to decide on what kid's going to get to play and not play. Because most, um, most registration fees range between 25 to 45 to sometimes $55 a player.
So a little bit more about BCDA. Um, when BCDA started, there was no funding sources, so if we did one beautification project a year, we thought we were accomplishing something. Um, Debbie.
Watson.
Debbie Watson from Umatel Electric was instrumental in getting the BCDA revived, and she would go out and get donations. Uh, so we could go out and do a cleanup project, or, you know, put welcome signs in, and we, we would pick some kind of beautification project, so we had $6,000, $7,000 to do a project, we thought we were doing great. Um, life has changed now, and we're, we're the recipient of dollars from the Columbia River Enterprise Zone, and that has ramped up, um, over the years since that program's been instituted and funding, uh, development corporations throughout the county uh, to do community enhancement projects, and we're now receiving a million dollars a year. So it's significant, it's significant amount of money, and it's not something that we take lightly. We work hard to make sure that the dollars are going to places where they need to in the community. Um, we can talk a little bit about the, um, community enhancement meetings that we have had over the years.
Tori, Ross.
We've got it, it's already where they, our community people have asked for different things for our community, and some of those are right up there on the, the screen that you see right there. Um, one of them was the dog park and the disc golf, and, you know, those are things that I was, right now is the beautification for the Main Street, that's South Main Street is what they've asked for, so and the signs, so we listen to kind of what they ask for in their surveys, and when they come to the meetings and so forth, and so we've put money towards those projects and so forth, so.
And so since 2011, we have been having that community enhancement meeting. Um, before that, we had a CEO forum that was done, um, at the port with all of the industry leaders. Um, and, and we decided we, we needed to get the community together to talk about projects. And we did that at the port, we would spread out to tables and do a roundtable discussion about projects. Um, we end up with a, a whole list of different ideas on the board, and then we'd let people at the end go put stickers on, so we have some indication of what was the most popular projects that people wanted to have funded in the community, and um, I've got a list here from 2011, 2015, 2018. Um, and in 2021, we did, 2020, we did the community survey that Ross was talking about, and then, and followed up with a meeting, so we will do that again this year. Um, watch for that survey to come out, it'll come out on Facebook probably. And, and we'll go through the same kind of motions, just to find out what kinds of projects people are interested in seeing, because everyone has different interests in what they'd like to see. So, the, the interesting thing, looking back over the years of these projects, is how many of them we've accomplished. Um, so I think we should be pretty proud of the fact that we're getting a lot of things done at Boardman this morning.
You can go ahead to the next screen, too. We'll just go into future projects that we've kind of talked about with you guys. Um, these are just kind of discussion topics for tonight, that, um, have been on our, uh, project priority list. And little pieces that we feel like this is a great opportunity to have a conversation with you guys on your guys' involvement, and just kind of knowing what we're doing and partnerships. Go ahead, Larry, on Columbia Avenue situation. Karen, you want to take that one?
Well, we set aside, yeah. We set aside $250,000 to do what we anticipated would be a walking path similar to the one that's on Wilson Road going to the school, you know, a paved strip with some barricades. And, you know, then the apartment complex went in and they put that strip of sidewalk in. So then people kind of thought, oh, well, maybe we ought to have a sidewalk over there. But I, I'm thinking maybe before we get done, we'll be back on the, the south side. And because the right-of-way will be easier to get, so anyway, um, I don't think that paving a sidewalk, I don't think 250,000 would do that project, but it needs, it needs to rise to the very top of the list. Before, you know, there's a lot of people walking, you know, I, I don't ride around much in the night, but people are still walking, and the school district has been willing to, uh, let us, if we need to cross there by the softball field, and come on the inside of their, of their fence, so that we don't have to go down into that ditch. But I do see people walking down in that deep ditch.
So we're talking the west side, we're talking the west side. For the east, the east side, excuse me, east side.
South side.
I'm, I'm either talking about the north or the south side, and I'm talking about the south side, and the
But on the east of Maine.
East of Maine.
Columbia, which goes east-west.
Yes, but the south side of Columbia versus the apartment side of the street.
I'm going towards the plants, not downtown, yeah.
So the original thought was we need a safe route to schools, and we need a safe path for, um, youth and adults both to get back and forth to the rec center. So something that could be a safe walking path all the way down to Olson Road.
Would say it'd be easier to make your sidewalk the north side or the east side? North side's already done, by, by the apartments, on that end, yeah. So I'm thinking of the ditch and the coming back that way, so.
That's really tough, but Tori's still out on that, Paul. Um, and if we did ask people in this room, we'd get five different answers on what to do.
Question.
And it's not our project, we're just supporting funding other project, it would be a city project. Just needs to be done.
We put the sidewalk in, there's got to be a crosswalk to go to the apartments. We're going to put in those flashing lights like we've got on Main?
Yes.
So there would be, hey, is somebody in the crosswalk?
Yeah, there would have to be, there's a lot of planning been going on for a couple of years about this project, because you're going to have to get the traffic slowing down somewhere around the softball field.
Right.
Then, now that the apartments are there, you know, somewhere you're, they're going to cross, then you have that traffic coming out of Morro Estates. And so, yeah, it is.
Because what is it, 45 until you hit 40? Until you hit the school zone?
No, no, it's 30.
30, and then it goes up to 40, and out and quarter. So where's the, but I, so 40 probably doesn't stop until you hit Morro Estates.
Olson.
I think it's, uh, did they change it?
At least Olson.
At least Olson.
Yeah.
The land of Old Man Weston.
It, it doesn't go past the cemetery, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
So like Karen said, I, this is, this is a city need, a community need, and there's been lots of, uh, looks at this on what's the best pathway. Yes, the sidewalk is developed along the Portview Apartments.
And in front of them will be BS, BS, what is it, BS, BSI? And he gets in front of there as well.
They don't have, they don't have sidewalk.
No.
Oh.
So it might come down to a bid, how much it's going to cost on either side. You might have to figure out, hey, what's your estimate on this side, and what's your estimate if you did it on this side?
Now, I remember discussion here a couple meetings ago, we were talking about the sidewalk all the way down to, uh, the rec center on, on Columbia Avenue, this supposed, this supposed to start on here and go all the way to here.
Yeah.
So we, I don't want to get in the weeds on the project here, but we're just letting you know that BCDA has set money aside to help fund this project, to the $250,000, and if it needed to be more than that as a, a helping contribution, we would do that. But, uh, we've had the money set aside for about three calendar years now.
Karen's going to remember this probably better than I do, but it's, and maybe even Jacob would remember it better. But Jacob and I served on a committee where that we talked about that very sidewalk three years ago, just before Portview was getting ready to start construction, because they were deciding whether or not to put in the sidewalk or put in something different than they give.
Well, on the south side, they kind of proposed a separated, um, pathway, like the one on Wilson. And then when it, after it left the school in Morro Estates, you're getting into businesses that would have to have a, a driveway access into their business facility, and then you've got some elevation issues going up, so it's just, I, I know the police department might like it on the north side better, and some people might like it on the south side better. Some might want a sidewalk, and some might want a separated paved pathway for safety. It's, it, it's a matter of dollars, probably.
So you have money set aside to do this, I take it?
BCDA has contributed money, uh, to this project.
So, so you've spent money on it already?
No, 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 we, we have it set aside.
Have it set aside, and the city has money set aside?
We've not done anything that it could talk about.
We need to get it done, I guess, if we've been talking about it for three years, we probably should get it done.
Well, here's, I'm going to tell you what the real problem is.
Okay, tell me what the real problem is.
It's like she says, if I ask you, and you, and you, you're all going to have a different idea where it ought to go and what it ought to be. So probably cement sidewalks are almost going to be cost prohibitive.
Okay.
But if we had enough money, that probably would be the way to go, but like she says, when you start going down by the cemetery and on that side of the street, you know, like in front of J and D and whatever that next place is and that, you know, they've been allowed just to turn off wherever, and that will change, and they all understood that. But I think there's a lot of we're back to getting the right-of-way, and you know how much trouble we've had? That's, that will be the biggest holdup on this project, again, we'll be getting the right-of-way to do, to do the project. If, if, even if we can set.
Right-of-ways from people's property?
Yes, because you, you know, some of them are built right out there on the, I mean, the edge, practically the edge of the pavements. So that means you're going to have to take, and they're not going to want us to peel off part of their landscaping, maybe. And then, you know, you go on farther down. And like, like she says, when you get to the CID building and Allen Homes and that, that's high, so you have, you're going to have to cut that back, well, I think the sewer line, well, I don't want to think, I know it runs along there. Now, it's really deep along there, but there's, there's a lot to consider, and so I think if it came up on the city council's list of things, then we would start, I don't, I can't recall that I've ever had Anderson Perry look at this job and give me a, you know, Jacob.
That's going to be important, I think, I know I would not want to walk across the street, walk across the street.
No, we want it all, we want to, you only have to cross, well, I guess you could cross at Olson. You know what I'm saying, if it, if it ended up on that side, but in the beginning, we thought there would be a lot less crossing and danger if it was all on, yeah, so. But since we.
Since Portview?
Right.
Because you've got a whole lot of people now living on the other side of the road, too, and, and you brought up the flashing crosswalks. BCDA actually paid for the crosswalks that the city has now.
Well, it's something that we've needed since, well, at least 20 years.
And, and we have offered, and I think the police department is out doing surveys now to figure out the best places where we need the next ones to go, and and how much they're going to cost, because I'm sure prices have gone up.
Yeah, and, and the lighting on that road isn't the best either.
Right.
So, you know, in, in the winter time, five o'clock, it's dark.
And you'll see lighting here on our list as well, but we definitely, um, and also I know the police department is out looking at the dark spots in the community, um, where lights might be out, where lights might be needed, and see if we can make some new path training, too.
Yes, because we could throw it on the list, I mean, just before we go over that, but and throw the list for Anderson, I think they've got to do, too, on maybe what's the best path for us to be able to start progressing on this, so it doesn't take another three years to get it done. I agree with that, Mr. Mayor, I think it should be done. By the way, get it done, Mike, right away, because you don't want to have a child coming home from school to get killed. And, and the darkness hours are getting closer and closer to the let-out time for school. Don't need to have that happen.
Well, and today I wrote a letter, well, an email, off to UEC about coming and giving us some ideas about Columbia Avenue. And, you know, because they don't like to put a light bulb in, and then next year we say, oh, sorry, we moved it. But still, like you're saying, that is so dangerous down there, and so many kids, or people, just people, walking and stuff that it, and I guess we started off with our first conversation.
Conversation. I guess let's just get it out there, right?
Yeah.
So, um, like we talked about crosswalks, flashing lights, and another spot is Main and Wilson, because we have so many kids crossing from
Those are the flashing stoplights, right?
Yeah, but we have so many kids coming from Anderson to school three times a day, it's heavy traffic with AEWs now out there, we got heavy traffic going out along Wilson. I just feel like that is a corner that really needs crossing, going east and west there from one side of Wilson to, oh, crossing Main right there, so that was something, if you guys were interested, I think it might be going.
Well, I know, you and I have talked about some of these things as well.
Yes, well, and two, now that's not a stoplight, that's those flashing.
No, it's a flashing stop sign that, if we're going to have a stop sign, we might as well get a flashing stop light or stop sign with the solar.
And we're talking flashing crosswalk.
Crosswalks, crosswalks.
Like, you know, like the crosswalks down.
And you're talking of the corner of Main and Wilson, you want the flashing crosswalk?
And it'll look like, it'll be look like the crosswalks by the high school and stuff like that, like, notice those people.
So you were thinking those instead of the flashing stop signs?
Or we can do both, I mean.
All those stop signs with that red and green thing, that's.
Like I went down that Wilson.
That's a really busy area, so that's where I was thinking flash and stop signs, but I didn't realize you were also thinking the crosswalks.
Yes.
Well, that's why.
And you could still even add that in there. I don't.
What's our police officer learn, what I can, like, is that?
Well, I feel like we need to address that, the traffic issue, but the city is working, Karen's working on, uh, a traffic analysis from Columbia to Main Street, or to Wilson, so that they can address, and so it would it might not be smart to put those in right away if they're going to do a bunch of stuff that we need to do, so they need to be in, um, that is a bad intersection, but I, I think we might be putting cart for the horse. Um, installing it if during our traffic analysis, we come up something. You could easily do the splash and stop light, stop sign, so. Stop sign's not a problem, when everything's there, the other you have to. As far as the structure, the, yeah.
Yeah, but those, with the rounding, when it gets foggy or, and like you say, shorter days.
Yeah, those are really easy, because the, the existing poles are already there, there's no additional wire or anything. Yeah, that's a star in the right direction.
Yeah.
Yes.
I had it kind of run it today in front of me, he ran, went straight through on Wilson to be the stop of that, I was at the stop sign, and I saw him coming for the pass, I was weird, just pulled right on him, right away?
Okay, now that's good. And the other, um, thought we had was going, I had been doing it at Columbia Avenue and Morro Estates, wherever that crosswalk is going to be between the apartments and, and Morro Estates, to actually get that flashing in to get people used to the fact that it's going to be there. It's just a, it's a hard spot with visibility and.
Yeah, because you're coming around the corner going.
Corner and elevation.
Yeah.
And there are a lot of students in the morning that cross there to get to the high school. And there's also a family who crosses there to get their kids to preschool.
You don't need to have them haul out to the hospital because somebody didn't stop.
Do they come to the preschool, do they come up and then go across the field, go in Portman Avenue across the field?
No, there is a preschool there on Dappley, inside Morro Estates.
Oh, there is?
Yes.
Oh.
So they cut through the cemetery?
No, they just cross from Portview Apartments into Morro Estates and walk straight and return onto Dappley. But on our foggy days, you know, I'm going to have to board and ask them, um, that's really hard to see somebody.
Even with those lights starting to see something.
You know, and that's a place where maybe a person should say, you know, it'd be helpful if you black a flashlight with you. I mean, that's not hard, you know. People don't think, people don't realize that they can't be seen, I think, either.
Well, if they dress like Mark, they're all, Matt likes to hide.
When they all do. Everybody wears black. Yeah.
So going to the next one, um, the welcome to Boardman signs, that was part of our wake-up signing project that we did, and that was done, those were already made about the time I came into the position and started doing that project. They are not a reflective final like all the other ones are in town. So you notice when it's really dark right now, those don't even exist anymore. Um, I'm just asking you guys, if you guys are okay or how the process would go, if we could add some lights to that, and I think they need to be ho- powered in from electricity. I have looked at every solar option possible, and I cannot find one with enough lemons, and with our foggy days and our dark winters, we don't have enough daylight hours to run the lights long enough to illuminate those welcome to Boardman signs. That is something that people have brought to my attention over the last year, those we've been in, that they are unseen during the dark times of the year, so as we know, it's dark early and they just can't see it anymore, so I was thinking of some kind of electrical, they can do a uplight that would just shine up on the signs and and illuminate them and give them a nice appeal, um, but we, I need some power to do that, so.
No, they won't let us cap off the, off their light post anymore. So, uh, and that's how we've done a lot of lighting here in Norman, is they used to allow us to cap off the streetlight.
Right.
And they said that, that that's, that done, you know. But most all of them have a place for irrigation. So, so if it's not mattered operated, there's power to them. Because there would be power, probably did both sides of it we're talking about.
Yeah.
I don't know about how Christmas and the power would work, but, right, that's another subject.
So something I was interested in doing, and then also updating landscape, um, people have requested having an updated landscape look. The old rocks that are behind the sign, uh, the current sign was there because it held the sign, the, the last signs that says Welcome to Boardman, um, um, we can get some ideas of what that landscape could look like and remove some of the. Um, we can get some ideas of what that landscape could look like and remove some of that and clear it up to really make those signs pop when you come in and not be overgrown by the trees and, um, the north side of the freeway, we had some issues where those trees grew over and actually bred on the signs and popped some rivets. Um, the cities, uh, made a screw as amazing, and they were able to go in and do some rivets and fix it. They're amazing, I'm just gonna tell you, we have the best group ever, I love them. Um, and they went and added some screws and pop rivets and fixed the signs for me again, because the trees were on them, and so they did some cleanup around them. Um, but their recommendation to me is to clear it out and start all over, so. And I told them I'll live into it and come up with some ideas and so. That's have another i- idea, I'm just trying to work on beautification, so when you come in to Portman, it kind of is a fresh deal. To go along with our, um, kind of just new rules that we're trying to require with our signage and wayfinding signs and back it up a little, so. Any more conversation?
Anyone online have any questions?
Um, I'll just say that I'm a hundred percent on board with the sidewalk along Columbia Avenue. I think putting it on the southern side makes the most sense with the crosswalk to access the north side. Uh, just real brief input without getting into the weeds, as you guys mentioned earlier, and then as far as you mentioned the lighting and the landscaping on the signs, I've been behind that from the get go and think that would create a real nice welcoming and cohesive look for our community throughout.
So I have means to, um, uh, Brian from Fort Morrow is going to go on a side, he goes to the side jobs occasionally. And he will create a landscape design idea that fits Portman's, uh, types of plants that grow well here. Kind of follow the scheme that's going through the board with the grasses and stuff like that, so. And there's opportunity to use him on the side and create a landscape for us. And that's a guy that has a degree in it, so he does it for a living, so.
One, two things I would tell you on that. Um, the lighting, you gotta be careful with, you gotta be, restrictions.
Yep.
And also clearance issues or visibility, so we just have to make sure we don't.
Yeah, it's a lumens, it's awful lumens. The lady didn't exactly know the lumens count, but she said that she would get me that lumen count, so. Because it can't reflect too far and it can't go too wide, it has to be pretty direct. Modern lighting, so it might be just not like, it's electrical. Um, powered in, wired in, hardwired in, it would just be enough to just have one probably on it, so. Going into our commercial retail. Uh, that's something that's been a prior, um, priority here recently, um, as you know, we don't have that many retail spaces for uh, new businesses to start up or businesses that are stuck in those small spots and little hidden spots. We like to come to the forefront and get out on street side visibility, and we've talked about doing some uh, commercial retail, so. Might take over from there.
Sure, so we, we think that, you know, Portman is a new community, we might not all know that here, but we're not fortunate to have a bunch of old buildings along Main Street for little business incubators to start up in that aren't very high rent, so. Uh, the only thing that we can do now is go out and build some more, uh, commercial retail strips. So that those businesses have an opportunity to have some place to start and grow, and, um. I think B C D wants to make it a priority to go ahead and construct a retail space. And the the size of the spaces could be very flexible at this point, but I would say anywhere from seven hundred feet to twenty five hundred square feet in, uh, each space to be rented out. Uh, we have, uh, had a couple meetings with Moore Development Corporation. Who is funding a building to go in Heffner that some of you might have seen. It will be more warehouse style, um, facility and more developments talking about, uh, actually approved investing in Portman here again as well. So, um, there'll be a good chance that we can get a lot of a building funded. And we're looking at lots right now, we have talked about some private ownership lots, and we talked to the city council about the possibility of a donation of, uh, a city lot on Front Street, and we may be back to you to talk to you about more of those, um. Here really quick, because that probably makes the most sense for, uh, a retailer with a lot of visibility. We have some people already interested in spaces, but, um, I was in one over in Richland a few weeks ago. And it had crepes on one side and it had ice cream on the other, and it it was a hole in the wall, but you know what, it had four or five tables inside and it it meant the needs of of, uh, what it needed to do, so. It doesn't have to be huge spaces to give people an opportunity to start a business. Anyway, that's anything that we have there.
I don't have anything to add, at least you killed it with it, but we see places for people to go.
Yeah.
I mean, and other things to offer in Portman. But when you are an outsider moving in, like it used to be, we need internet or something like that, and that's accomplished, and this is something that we hear all the time. Like we need more options in Portman, whether it's food, retail, etc., so.
We used to think we needed a lot, a drive family, and now we'd just be happy if we had a beautician, so I don't know. But there's those kind of businesses, like a beautician and all of those kind of things, are just basic to a community, and, yeah, so.
Need to make it affordable for them as well, you you can't just build a building and expect somebody to pay five thousand dollars a month for rent.
Yeah.
And not be able to make a living off of that, and so we have to be able to provide them with the the space that they need so that they can provide a service for our community and still make a living on it too, and what we've got now is not working, so.
And obviously, if there is private investment out there, we'd like to make that um, investment in our community, we would love to have that too. Um, but it, like Ross said, it will increase the the first workup cost to a business startup to try and get in there too. So with with this option and community development, more development working together, so we can get a building built and offer a lower rate for somebody.
Well, I think we used to see that this we're hoping would entice a a private developer to see how well this works. And they would wanna develop something thinking that, you know, so, I mean, it always, you know, kind of getting the ball to moving. That they can see, because I've had people come, uh, I don't know how many times talking about, well, you know, I'd like to build a little strip mall, what do you think, and I, yeah, I think that'd be a great idea. But they never do it, so. I think if we show them how, that they'll, we can get people interested.
Well, I think people have to also understand that just because you build a strip mall, you, they think, oh, we're gonna get this chain to come in this franchise, and it doesn't work like that, you have to have a usually certain population and they have requirements for that, so. You know, asking, you know, for, uh, Trader Joe's to come into Portman's. Nice, but it's not gonna happen, I mean, they can barely get one entry cities, so, I mean, we have to be realistic with our options as well, but also meet the needs. So. And you're right, and so those franchises, um, somebody in Hurston or someone in the Dallas could actually own the franchise that covers this area. So until they want to do it and give it up, it's not gonna happen. And we 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 look at the metrics, Tori has had studies on, and we borrow studies from the hotel or somebody else to to look and see, you know, what what do we need to meet in order to get checks? I feel like we're right there, we have all these new communities, we have these new businesses, I mean, we're we're close, yeah.
It's just a thing that the strip mall, how we're perceiving it is that, no, right, we're not gonna get Trader Joe's to come here. But we have some local people here right now that are in areas that they don't wanna be that can be more successful in a place like this, that's perfect, we have our own people that we want to be able to utilize that as well, and would it be great to have Trader Joe's, yeah, or other chains come in here, it'd be great, but we gotta start someplace and start with some of our own and maybe they'll come.
Exactly.
And competition is a good thing, I mean, competition makes every business healthier, I think, so. Um, you know, we're not out there trying to attract someone, to put somebody out of business, it's a matter of allowing the space for an opportunity to happen.
So going on to the next, uh, discussion, it'd be, uh, expanding recreation options in City Park, um. The arena is great to work with, but it has some restrictions with the, um, court or something like that, but I have probably over the last four or five months had people come in to to the safety center and ask for pickleball. They are from Portland, they're from Seattle, and they're from Central Oregon. And they tour around and do pickleball at the state arena, and the guys like, I, we want pickleball, well, then there's also a pickleball association in Hurigan. There is a pickleball association all around our area. Um, and I just think it'd be a great addition to the city park, it kind of has the opportunity to expand in that area and add to what we replaced the basketball court, and it made it a lot more appealing there, it's a pole court now. And so it is, pickleball is something that people have wanted, it's an upcoming event, a sport that really has gotten big and.
Stolen off.
It is really taken off, um, our local fire department would love to have a pickleball court, so, um. Uh, they currently have one inside the fire station, they rolled the trucks out, made one inside, so, um. So that's just something that, would you guys be of interest in, if something like that, if I got a proposal together to maybe place at the city park? Is that an area where you guys would want it, is there another space where you think you would want it, or? Um. Okay, right next to the last one for, yeah, great. There's a lot of open space there in that park, uh, especially since we lost all the trees now, there's a lot of open space. Um.
But there's a lot of soccer kids play, I mean, you really are gonna have to keep in mind.
You're above the soccer be. Yep. Oh, it's up on the hillside, it'd be up on the hillside, just down from the pickleball or the basketball court, between there and then the gazebo kind of, and that's where the space there, the space, probably like a two court complex, look, two or three court complex.
They still have a comment about it, because it it would still take away.
Yeah.
It'd still take away places that they currently use.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean that they did all.
Right. Because there's multiple of the fields around, like, maybe like institutions and.
Trying to figure out how to make it work for them.
Yep, yeah. So it's just another option, um, I think it's a great addition to that park, especially since we've lost some trees. It's a need, it's not a coming sport, um, it's not the same set. You know, we can, kind of, the basketball court's pretty easy to find a concrete, it's all positive installation of it, and oversee the project and have a a whole perfect movie. Um, Front Street Park improvement, and so there is another play structure down there. Um, I think it's like a play structure really needed down in that area, just be north of the splash pad. Between there and skate park, and I've had requests on our product priority list, and free damping the skate park a little bit. And then adding lighting down in that area, we have some light poles down in that area, but um, like we were talking about earlier, how dark that area is, I think that's, um, if we add some lighting, would help with, um, kind of things that happen at night, um, and I think it would just kind of keep everybody a little more honest if there were more lighting down in that area, and then offering a play structure. I do know from working at the safety center, um, a lot of the families from that apartment that's just north of the splash pad and around that area, they come down Front Street all the way to the safety center, and they use our structure all day, everything. It's, they're there all the time, and they come in the evening times a lot and use it at night. Um, so it's a need, and they come from that area every time, they walk that way, or they either come from the rec center or they come down Front Street from across the soccer field to the safety center. And that community over there really doesn't have a park anywhere, does it? So their park is that park, but it's only park that really doesn't have a play structure or anything on it, it just has a splash pad, and they kind of use a splash pad as their play structure during the off season, so they get to play and hang on the crossbars and stuff like that, so. Um, and it also gives more to do during the soccer events, and it's on those fields too.
Be a good addition for, especially with everything that's going on down there.
Yeah.
And we're not talking about something to the tune of of Funland Park, you know, it's, you know, just like an additional play structure or, you know, some other little objects out there would be great, it doesn't have to be the surrounding.
Kind of like what they have at Woody River.
Yeah. So the guy that is doing the, uh, Funland Park in Hurston is from Portland, he is the one that we're getting all the dog park equipment from. He's a pretty nice guy, he talks to him quite frequently, he's coming through here all the time. So he said he was gonna stop through and look at these different parks in the areas for me, give some ideas of what he feels fits in those areas within the budgets that were really the plan or something, so. He's gonna be coming through here sometime soon, uh, just to do some more work down on the Funland.
Hey, can I ask a quick question? Um, in regards to the Front Street Park area, are there any rules or opportunities for like food vendors, like an ice cream truck or a taco truck or something to pull up there during the summertime? During the weekends or the days where those areas are busy, to encourage people to hang around a little bit, enjoy the splash pad? Have an opportunity to get something to eat?
We tried a few years ago to have a little farmer's market place down there. Um, and I think that Jim at the store actually was hiring somebody, and they put food down there, Art supplied the building maybe or something, I don't remember all the daily details, but it. So the building you're thinking about is where the fruit stand was, and um, Art and Kathy were both involved in that project, and, um, it is being relocated down the street, um, the port bought a lot, actually from the city, right across the street from the safety center. We're buying a lot, and so we're thinking that that, uh, fruit stand will be put in that parking lot. And be available, and it might be a really great place to have a farmer's market in the future again. It'll be a lot more visible from the freeway, and then we're expecting with the addition of the conference center onto the safety center that we're going to have a lot more activities in that area, so hopefully it'll be a good spot.
Well, and it was really just at the end of what it was, I don't know the number, what are they called, church or the church that is going all the way through?
Right.
It was more like a, I think the original intention was to have a building there to sort of have someone available in case the child or family needed something, or just another set of eyes in an otherwise, uh, dirt location.
So it wasn't, it was kind of downhill, and I'm on the regular paths for people going around home to work, and so. Didn't work great as a fruit stand, um, but hopefully this one though.
Well, maybe somebody needs to contact somebody like Christie who runs her, her her ice cream truck or something, maybe to, you know, maybe park over there for about two times a day or something. You know, I mean, if people are interested, obviously, she set up shop for a little while, and then go, but come back and 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 sell ice cream there with the kids.
So right now, Portman doesn't have a business license, right, so you have someone that stops with their back of their truck pulled up selling.
With their little push cart.
Yeah.
You know, Hurstons started there, so they somewhere, and and they bought it for a long time. Um, but they ended up designating a food pot area and fenced it off, but. There, there are a lot of trucks that come through here with food and stop at businesses for lunchtime or breakfast.
Well, and that would be, my idea is to create in it, um, a location, a venue where people could have an experience and not just do one thing and then pack up and leave, like they would be able to stay for quite some time, to make a day of it.
Because I think that's kind of what they have on the park, they have a little snack shack there that offers snacks and goodies and drinks and stuff. snacks and goodies and drinks and stuff during the day, during prime times and weekends and stuff and um, but, you know, we can discuss ways of uh, we can incorporate that and kind of create that area to be the fun gathering location.
Mm-hmm.
Right, as you know, right now we've got the soccer field and then a parking lot. And then we're, and dog park, and then we're going to have another parking lot on corner, so.
There's opportunity and space. And then lighting, lighting's always a discussion, um, like we talked about. So it sounds like Karen has a plan already, kind of starting that conversation.
So you're a park guy who's gonna go around and look at all parks and talk about different ideas for them?
Mm-hmm.
Um, is he gonna look at the one over on Anderson as well?
Has, in the past, has not been a park project priority list because we tried, we've just mainly done Marina City and then this area right here. Because that feeds the three locations of Portman and that this one here kind of serves that area. Um, I do know that Bailey Park Development initially has mentioned about doing some development expansion of that park because it's gonna um benefit his, his uh housing development. Um, he's mentioned that to me a couple of times, so I'm not sure. And it just hasn't been one of our priority spots. I mean, it's more in discussion maybe.
It is pretty good. Leslie, there is a new park going in. Rome, I don't know if it's Rome Street or Anthony. Rome?
Rome, no, it wasn't. It's south, right south of Shelby Percy House, right on that corner where a little bump is.
So that's, yes, that and that little, those two lots right there where it shifts from Rome to Anthony.
There's room space right there designated for their park. Yeah, so on this three, on this discussion, we kind of have another slide is, or on agenda kind of open discussion and I kind of forgot to add it. Um, is uh South Main Street on our community project survey was the number one topic of discussion. Um, it's been on the project, project priority list for probably the last four or five years that I can see. Um, and we, you know, we're interested in putting some effort into that with you guys and in developing that and making that more appealing.
You would have the reason to break it down into pieces and and, and Karen, you thinking about some plans? Do you have some plans for something?
I, I wouldn't do anything to supplement until it's paid. I mean, that's the bottom line. If you want to do the five, you want to help buy tr- buy trees or do that, but that will be a package deal. I just had Anderson Perry re-figure that and we're still we're about a million nine, so we're still a two million dollar figure. And the two million would take it, you know, from where we put there to uh Wilson and when we do that, see, everything turns into something else. Because we really should think about a roundabout there. Whether you like it or not, you might, this might be a consideration of a roundabout at Main and Wilson, because you're not gonna get less traffic, I doubt. I mean, you will get some when we finally get to build, you know.
Oregon Trail.
Yes, Oregon Trail, but it, yeah. So anyway, but I don't even care what you think about that right now. I think we'll try to make the the wider, you know, like the term, if you're going, you know, it'll have a bigger apron there, so those kind of things will be, will make it much nicer. And we, we would try to make it a lot safer, so, yeah, but um you know, if, if right now you were thinking about, I don't know, ripping out the little white that fence thing, I guess you could do that, you know? That'd be a project, but.
But you could put a sidewalk in the gutter and tell you to know where your paving is gonna be.
Yeah, I mean, most everything depends. And when we do the paving, we intend to do you know, shrubs on each side, you know, sidewalks, like some landscaping and that kind of thing, so. I know people are sick of waiting. I mean, you know, I keep saying that, when I got this job, was that street out there? But uh, yeah, we just, we've not even come close to having the money. We apply for grants all the time and aren't successful for some reason and but hopefully we can get enough money saved this year. See, and that's gonna be the deliberation for the city council. Okay, you really want Main Street done and we need to do Columbia Avenue and those probably then you're gonna get needing to do front streets because of the traffic falling. So you're going to have a lot of that kind of infrastructure. We've done it pretty well. We've gotten our water sewer, that kind of thing, pretty well under construction. So now it's streets, so, you know, we'll have to sit down and look at our budget and kind of figure out like, okay, we could, you know, we could probably do this and because uh this next, in a couple of days, uh Merkley's people will at least be here for the we're in cutting for the AWS and so I have asked to meet with them earlier because I I, I wanna know what we're gonna do with a lot of infrastructure things. And if we would be lucky enough, Karen might be our saving grace, is if the federal government and all the money they're wanting to spend, if we could attract some of that. You know, because the money we can get now, you can't spend on streets. I mean, the money we have now that they've sent us, you cannot use it on that, on streets, so. And I can't, the other thing I can't do is I can't take that money and put it on the bond issue and take the bond issue money and put it out here because that was also water and sewer, so. We just have to.
Well, maybe hopefully we can use some of the press money that we can hopefully anticipate that we get. Maybe we can start earmarking some of that and really start working hard as the council start earmarking some money. So maybe in two years, we have two billion, two and a half billion.
Yeah, I think two years, we could probably do that if, if we can get some money from the press, for sure, and we can make, yeah, a lot of really good progress. The hardest, the front streets, you know, because they're gonna they're gonna come forward whether we want them to or not and so.
Karen, can that federal money be used on sidewalks or bike paths?
No, that's considered streets. Yeah, that's part of the streets.
Okay.
So another project that uh is not on our agenda right now and should be is North Main Street and a project that we wanted to do for several years is add attractive lighting, which requires electrical. So another big ticket project, but something that um we'd like to see the member community a lot more attractive.
And that would be down on the high school side, on high school side of Main Street.
And when we did that, that's for sure, when you would put in extra power for those corners to run flashing whatever it might be.
And also, we miss that you guys kind of see something that we partner with or? I mean.
I think you guys have done a really nice job, honestly, with a lot of things I've seen, like the signs and the, the all the art, their home pieces, like all the library and things like that, all those little patches sets apart from other little small towns and so I, for one, I'm really impressed with.
So we just wanted everyone to get a chance to have this open discussion. And you can see what, and we're not trying to step over the top of the city council ever on a project. Um, if we have money, we just wanna go do it, get it done. Um, and sometimes if, if we don't take the proper process, we apologize now. Um, just remind us that you're the city council and you have authorized that. Anyway, uh, David, do you have anything else?
Oh.
Marie's pretty new to our work. Um, you don't know Marie? She's a volleyball coach at high school and she works at uh Three Mile. And do you have any other projects, any other interests you have?
I know, thank you.
Well, I was saying that if, before we can partner, I think we can accomplish more projects that we really want to do for our community. And that's what it's all about is um make this a community better place, more attractive for people who wanna come and live here. You know, I got managers in my plant that live in tri cities. I like, we live in Portland, not here, so it's.
That's the answer question.
Thank you. Um, I just think that this, all of these projects are really important and have a place in our community, so I appreciate everything that VCDA and the board is doing and has done thus far. And I think it speaks to the importance that I would like to request that city council have a meeting um, just to identify our priority projects and how we're going to move forward. And that means what is our mission and what are our objectives? So that we can ensure that all of our decisions going forward are related to those objectives.
Uh, and I just got that out of my head this morning. And I don't know if any of you have had a chance to read it or if it's circulated to nothing, but but the front page article is about the top twenty taxpayers in the county. And Amazon Data Services is contributing now over eleven million dollars a year um in taxes back. And a couple of highlights in the article, it said uh there's over a hundred homes in uh North Form County, so you know, we're gonna have a lot of those. Leslie, you probably have a real good catalog of the the housing data, but um all of these things are giving us the ability to have a, a nicer community here and we just want to thank everyone for their hard work.
So moving forward, next thing priority on the VCDA is we are going to be creating a survey and, and sort of leading that around for a little while. We'll get the results from that. We'll share those results with you guys. And then from that, we take those results and that creates a new, um, a community workshop kind of discussion, as we did last year where we open up to key members that can really give their input to us and we elaborate on what's part of the, or requesting. And so that is the, will probably be happening here in the next four weeks and then probably hopefully by, have a key discussion by the beginning of the year. Get past the holidays and have that meeting and then off of that, that creates our current project priority list and um, since we kind of been getting all this, I gotta say that majority of our projects on our project priority lists are done. Um, besides those big, big two items that just keep paying, that we can't um you know, have it done and finished yet because they're such big two items, but um, we're just thankful that we can continue to offer what we're doing and get the community input, so. That's what we'll be doing next and so if you guys, we share, we just ask you guys to continue to share those with your contacts so we can get good results and know how many people involved in those surveys. And the more we have our surveys, the more things we get, the better listed it gets, it creates a greater feeling better, so.
I, I think it's shocking to look at the community limit numbers on some of these projects too. One point nine million dollars for a fire program and I don't know how much she does this and that.
And she can go back to that slide.
Uh, we spent a lot of money on broadband already and um, as you know, Boardman was looking to give a grant to help put some new broadband in the community and we wanna continue to expand that. Um, and make sure that, that we're really covering uh city limits and getting outside the city limits.
Yeah, they still can't get it to the mayor's house. That's really crazy. But I've mentioned that to them all the time, that you can't get it to the mayor's house.
And they have not gone down. They're, they're, they're picking up the easy stuff first, so.
Well, I saw them drop the wire right outside my house, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, as part of this project, your problem is that you do the hybrid system, so when you do fiber direct, there's very minimal return work that you have to do to fix any of that equipment. But when you do a fiber hybrid with wireless modems and routers and stuff like that, his, he prags himself in his customer service, so when you have somebody that's like, hey, I don't have internet today, his priority is to go get that guy before he doesn't go get that guy. You know, his, his internet was down one time, I think, for an hour and I was like, he just got demolished on social media, like, it's been down one time and like, he's done every day, so.
We call them once a month.
Yeah.
My son emailed me today. I'm like emailing him back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he's working.
Can I interrupt and just make sure that Junior's question is answered? I don't think it's been addressed yet. It's in the chat.
Then we have a plan for the full reader board structure.
If, if, I think if I would say the word, we would tear it down. What I really would like to do is find something that would just say the temperature and, you know, not like lots of things like it used to, but it's every day you go by there, you just, we just don't think about tearing it down.
So I have an opportunity that was brought to me. It's, I don't know if you guys have heard of Super Signs? See, but there's three Super Signs in Hurston. They are solar powered sign. It stands about eight feet tall. And on one side, it has your city map and what's available in your area. And you didn't offer advertising that helps cover the cost of the sign. The other side is a E, E littering is called, where E beaver, you can go in and like save your name and have a chamber can manage this thing. She can go in and update a calendar, so it has calendar events. It has, if you have a flyer that needs to go on, you can put a flyer, you can do a newspaper or article on it. You can do the city's temperature, you can do the city population, you can do anything on the Super Signs, all with solar. And they're really attractive and I can make them look blue and follow the same um, design that we are currently having with our wayfinding sign. It's a great way to interact with the community and so um, like I said, Hurston has three of them right now. And we're getting ready to tear out the um kiosk board up at the safety center and replacing one there and kind of be our trial first, um, spot one, but another one I think is right there because the high school kids cross right there is the main cross spot where I think we really could catch people advertising opportunity and they're attractive and they're, they're, you know, they're kind of new, kind of edgy, that kind of people are like, who are those? And so they're kind of, they're really attractive.
Where, where is that person?
Um. One by the new O M G Burger.
Yeah, yeah, right down on the, on our
On our Main Street, but the others.
The, the Decker Street, I did. There's one on the Decker Street. There's one over by McKinsey Park. And then there, I think that by the fire station somewhere there and there's one somewhere else. I don't, I don't know. Yeah, but there's three in there. But they're pretty, they're pretty neat. Um.
So is, is Junior asking because he wants to do something with that or?
Do you have an idea, Junior?
I mean. Well, my, my concern is that it blocks the view of traffic. Uh, it's, it's difficult when you're coming up Boardman Avenue to see if anybody's coming without being in the crosswalk.
Okay, okay, now I'd like for you to observe, because I have this argument all the time, that if you're going to allow parking in that parking lot and you cannot, I mean, those people need to have parking for that business. That bench and those rigs that are across along that street are the obstacle. It is not that sign. That bench and those rigs that are parked along that street are the obstacle. It is not that sign.
I actually would agree with Karen. I pull up there all the time. I, I can get in a wreck any day of the week, right there. Cause there's usually a big white pickup truck in the very first parking spot, right, right in the corner. And you genuinely cannot see through it.
I, I think it's important to remember before doing a traffic study. And it's going to address a lot of those issues because I'm afraid, I'm afraid what you're going to find out. This boardman's going to get his traffic control device that everybody wasn't really thinking they would have, so.
And I think that would be a good solution now. I mean, who knew we were going to have this much traffic?
So it's.
I would like to point out also that that big white truck and the other one that parks there in that very first spot, I believe are primarily there for security sake. There's better lighting in that area, especially at night and more visibility.
I'm just saying, I fit in the corner. You cannot see through the white truck.
Might just see from an aesthetic standpoint though, like how long do you leave something that's dead like that? That would be my thought with it.
Yes, I agree with that. Is that we either need to find somebody that can do temperature and time of day on. Or, or take it down. And probably of course we'll take it down.
So that you could like. Like take it down to some other place to make another organization that might want it for their, you know.
It's, it's unviable. It's a very old type of techs that are turning available for it. So if we really want to improve something there in that corner.
Take the box off.
I feel like if we want to do something, we could really improve the high school reader board on the other corner where he utilized sports. The high school, the community, and really where it's visible by a lot of people turn that corner. And kind of in a pretty good location. So I mean, that's an opportunity for an upgrade right there. That board is pretty old too and it's pretty dated on the style of where it was on it.
That goes all the way back to the Lennys.
2008.
So there's an opportunity. If we want to be able to have date, time, where it kind of rolls and does like a rolling one, like one of the state center where we have date, time, temperature, events.
But, but I think you're missing, it's one thing at the state center to have events and stuff. But I have to tell you, people complained all the time about. Having events on that one up there and they never could agree. I've got to go to the service station and stop. That is totally useless to me. And I think like the new one we put out there, we part, I mean, everything is in huge letters. And so when you're driving, it's, it, you're, you're gonna, I mean, you're not going to have as many nice flyers. And we're not in the Chamber of Commerce either. You know what I'm saying? My job's not advertising particularly. But yeah, I think that. That one at the high school. Could be bigger and better. And, and if somebody wanted to keep it up, our problem was, like you say, it got so outdated that. We couldn't put a new park for it, you know?
And then probably a discussion that will be based on the results of your traffic study.
Yes, I, well, and I'm sure he's gonna. Yeah, and I think that, like you say, if we can't make it work, then I don't have time to find somebody that knows how to do that. Because they want 50,000 otherwise. And I don't want to invest 50,000 in a reader ward there.
What's the timing in traffic? Did you bring this up?
When they can get, you gotta get a contract together. They have to schedule it. I, I, my guess is it's going to be.
I don't think we've seen it in January probably.
Yeah. We just had a meeting with them.
For, for, yeah.
I think I wanted to do them in prime time. So like, the maritime isn't going to give you the most accurate number as like spring or middle summer or something like that.
Well, and, and we don't want it during Christmas break.
No.
Because that's not going to address the issue of the traffic from the school. I mean, so there, there's several things. It's going to, it's going to be a while. We just had a meeting with them and seemed like last week or a week, no, it was week before. And, and. So it's going to take some time, but it's needed and. I mean, some of the areas that we're talking about probably aren't going to be there anyway. Because of, you know, what they come up with the plan. The one roundabout that they talked about that intersection would take out, not only that. That sign, but it's to take out the high school sign and, and, and have to push it further back. Because you've got commercial vehicles there, so you've got to get a roundabout big enough for commercial vehicles. Yet you, you got to take in consideration the traffic coming off freeway. You can't back them up too far. So there's several things that they've got to do to try to alleviate this. So it's going to take them a little while to come up with a plan. And that's, to me, that's the most pressing intersection in this city. It's the most dangerous, in my opinion.
We're going to trigger the overpass improvement.
That's what we've been asked for.
I would hope, I would hope somebody. By just us would think that if that's important. I'm hoping that we get some infrastructure money from the federal government. When they start doing out the big funds. Because we have, I mean, we have plans that are ready to go this time. This isn't like, you know, like the last time this all went around. You know, we didn't have any plans on the shelves. And then do I have plans now? I mean, I could, if you gave me money. As in not being able to find workers.
Well, if you're looking at grant dollars, you have to look at every offer that you can. Need to use the school. You got it as a grounding point for a grant and safety.
Well, and, and the problem we face is that the overpass, it's a federal. It's not, I mean, we can't get anything unless we get the feds to pay for it. And it really needs to be afforded overpass to address a lot of those issues. But then when you do that, you've got to extend your offering. I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff to go into that. So Karen, you've been talking to our, our federal leaders and our state leaders saying, hey, I need some money to fix this issue. So it's, it's, it's in progress, but who knows when and if we'll get the money to do it.
You should have scheduled the ribbon cutting parade that we asked Berkeley right around when the high school gets out. He's coming off the freeway and trying to get there and.
Easy, Karen, to, to the station at about three thirty.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Tell them about quarter after three. Oh, you must roll me off.
Good luck. Well, you can start opening.
So I'm hoping that we address some of your questions about VCDA. We want to continue to do projects in this community that just make it a better place for all of us to live. We go through this formal process to look at what people want. We try and, and get those accomplished. And then out of the blue, we get a call from, you know, my, my neighbor is a soccer coach and he's like, the. Regulations are changing for soccer field size and the OPC field needs new soccer goals. Hey, we can fund that. So we're going to be getting a request to, to fund these soccer goals. So we, we will try and do as many of those recreation opportunities that make things easier for people, but.
Well, if I can put in a plug, I would like to put in a plug for maybe your park guy can give some advice about that park over on, or on Anderson. Because it. Despite many of its other shortcomings. It's very. Integrated. It could use a full upgrade. So, and I don't know that. You know, some of the other city parks are just city. So if it's a city park and we have a developer. I mean, it's nice to have a developer shoulder part of that, but. It would be nice to look into that because it's.
And, yeah, I mean, maybe you were about to park, maybe you started to calm down or drive across Main Street and come to this part of town. And sometimes you make safety reasons of adding some community so that it doesn't have to go that far.
Yeah. I mean, this was a nice addition. We also have both grade schools. So most of the population that lives on this side of Maine. Is very well taken care of in the parks department, even if it's a bit of a jones. But the kids that are on that side. Are, are, and there's lots of them are without the same resource.
And more coming in.
And more risk. They have to cross it either Oregon Trail, a dirt path through Mon's property or at Wilson.
Is there anything else anybody would like to share? VCDA ladies, you all finished?
Thanks for taking the time to be with us.
All right, with that. Hope this will be.